Call me in order. Oh, please rise. And I ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on a business that's before us this evening. And please draw me to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Here.
Alderman Begley. Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman Violet.
Here.
Alderman Bassow.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Here.
Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
All right. First thing on your order, we have a special presentation, a Christmas presentation, it says. Alderman Clifford.
Oh, okay. Ah, yes. At the top of the list, so we can get everybody out of there.
Oh, no.
First of all, let me say, each year I try to do a little something in Christmas memory of the two grandsons I lost. But, and to help everybody here and all over, the response was even great to help these kids out this Christmas with toys and stuff. One of which is the treasure chest with their children's oncology out of Tinley Park. They now have like thirty-one organizations, I believe it is, or we're asking how to say.
We've opened sixty-six, right?
Sixty-six, I'm sorry. It's been last year. And this here is my nephew, who was on the board of directors and got me involved with it a few years back. And the other is Children's La Rubita Hospital. Monica Chakowskis, the children's advocate there, we helped out a few years ago when COVID made, put out the word they needed some help and we responded, so with that. So what I'd like to do, first of all, I'd like to present Mr. Mayor. Come out. Bob is very involved, like I am, with the Lions with Sartoma, and they have group homes there. My daughter worked for Park One, and they're similar, and they have group homes where the people need food and everything. So each year, through the Lions Club, myself and the work I do there and the trees we secure, I'd like to give you three separates, three hundred dollars and things for your group homes. Get some dinner.
Well, on behalf of the Sartoma Star Services, which is our new name this year, we merged Sartoma Center and Allsett merged with the Sartoma, with the new Star Services of Chicago Heights. And this allows us to provide employment. We have a staff of about six hundred and fifty people that work for us that are paraprofessionals throughout the southwest suburbs. And we provide services for the development disabled and mentally ill, mentally ill, to about two thousand people a year. And so I've been fortunate to serve on the board of the Sartoma Center for about forty, forty-seven years or so, and the last twenty-five as president. And I am now the chairman of the Sartoma Star Services. So on behalf of the Star Services and the people we provide services for, and you say group homes, we have about twenty group homes now, and also we have two supportive living operations that are in Homewood and Orland Park, and we're in the process of building one in Allsett right now. So again, this will go to good use, and thanks, Jack, for your generosity and your work on this. Appreciate it. Thank you.
One of the things I'd like to let you know that through the Lions Club, a lot of donations here, some of them are from that, is that I'd like to mention this, these are being presented to these organizations in a memory of a lost fellow member, Mount Carmel guy. His name was Tom Post. And we set this up as the Tom Post Memorial Fund from now on. And Tom was an active mentor, a volunteer, and a great humanitarian in Lions Service Program. So in honor of him, we're going to present these, part of it is in there for them. So first of all, I'd like to present to Monica, representing La Rubita Children's Hospital, the amount of one thousand fifty dollars.
Thank you so much. Thank you all so much. As Jack said, my name is Monica, and I am a supervisor over at La Rubita Children's Advocacy Center. We're an off-site location from the hospital. And we do forensic interviews on children who have been sexually abused, physically abused, witnesses to violent crimes, and who have been human trafficked. So each year, we like to get together, grab our donations from people who donate, and go and provide Christmas gifts to these families and children who have experienced unfortunate situations or are currently still dealing with those situations. So thank you so much. This will definitely be put to good use.
And Max, I'd like, representing the Treasure Trust, I believe it's OCIO. This is Ms. Kendra Connor. And I'd like to submit a check and donations to you in the sum of fifteen hundred dollars.
I just want to say thank you, Jack. As everyone knows, you're a superstar here in Payless Heights in terms of the charity work you do and helping the kids. We really appreciate it. This is the best organization, one of them, that I've found. Kendra is our new founder now, and we've got sixty-seven and sixty-eight opening in Virginia. We help every kid fighting cancer in Illinois, Wisconsin, Indiana, who's going through treatment, giving out over twenty thousand toys. It's all done out of one location in Orland Park. So I mean, never on a budget more than four hundred thousand, which is the most amazing thing to me. So a lot of good work being done, a lot of good people. I look forward to circling back on the board after my hiatus per the bylaws and introduce Kendra here, who's our new superstar, who's representing the organization. Kendra Connor.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, thank you all so much, Jack, for this donation. It will go to great use. I actually talked to a mom and a daughter today, where the daughter benefited from our program. She was three years old, and she's going to college now. So it's kind of a wonderful full circle thing for me to see coming on and seeing the work that has been done for the past twenty-seven years and how we continue to grow. So thank you again so much for this donation.
Just a couple of things, I wrote a little something because it sort of, I choked up about it. But a few years, eight years ago, I, people ask you, why do you always try to raise sons for these things? And they're kids, you know, they're kids, they got cancer there. But I was asked why you do this. And I do it now, memory and exorcist, Christmas this day, December nineteenth, eight years ago, is when I lost my identical twin grandchildren. These donations help small children who are going through oncology treatment, cancer, in a special time of this year. Eight years ago, my grandsons were born, they lost their battle with TTS, a condition that robs hundreds of parents of their children every year. We did, we did everything we could to save them from monitoring the medication, bed rest. It was too much for them to overcome. Then we heard the worst words a parent could ever hear, there are no heartbeats. I've seen four of my children were born, but only two. I've only heard two of them cry, and I've only heard two of them laugh, my granddaughter Dani and Ally. I can only hope that in their memory and through what we do here on this day to help these other organizations in their brief lives can teach someone about their battle and their condition that robbed them, robbed of them. Today is a day to remember that there is help, that some people are struggling to remember what joy is. Today is a day to remember to be sympathetic, empathetic, and grateful. Today is a day to listen, talk, and to lean on a shoulder, or to be that shoulder to lean on. Today is a day to love, just believe in the season. And that's pretty much why I do this thing, and I'll say the rest of my remarks when I finish business. But that's what's behind this, in memory of that, in memory of helping these kids and these kids' organizations, helping Bob with his group homes over there as much as we can. And the Lions Club is a big organization. And not only that, it's the people here that formed this tight-knit group of support, but also the residents of Payless Heights that have come to my door and said, Jack, I'll give you a check, you know, blah, blah, blah. So anyway, thank you, have a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Well done, Jack.
Thanks, Jack. All right. Thanks, Jack. Appreciate it and all your work and your efforts and that. Under consent calendar, we've got two items, the approval of the city council meeting minutes of December fifth, 2023, and along with the approval of the payroll and voucher list for the period ending December fifteenth, 2023.
Move by Alderman Clifford. Second by Alderman McGovern. Discussion, rule call.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Okay. Passes, we've got some sealed bids tonight for the meter, water meter program.
Okay, the first bid is coming from Professional Meters, Inc. The total bid is two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars. The bond amount is ten percent of the bid. Is that enough for due? Okay, great. The second bid is coming from, did I say, United Meters, Inc.? Okay, this is United Meters, Inc. The total bid amount is one hundred and eighty-three thousand and nine hundred dollars. The bid bond is ten percent of the amount of the amount bid. And the final bid is coming from Calment City Plumbing Company, Inc. The total bid amount is one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, I'm sorry, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars. And with a ten percent bid amount for the bond.
A move to send to water and sewer, for consideration. Moved by Alderman Violet, to send his water and sewer. Seconded by Alderman McGovern. Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, goes there. Okay, thank you. That's it, right? All right, just a couple of general remarks, I'd like to wish Merry Christmas to everybody here in the city of Payless Heights. It's the time of year to kind of get out and give some goodwill, and I think Jack started it off tonight, definitely, by doing that. If you get a chance, you may want to check out the new Christmas tree. This new city Christmas tree was donated by the Beautification Committee, and it now stands in the municipal parking lot. And it's a big tree. It's a nice, nice tree, and we'll be using it from here on. It was a little late getting here this year, or it got here and was broken, so he got a new one, but it didn't get here until this week, so now it's up. And just a little bit of housekeeping, there's a good chance we will cancel the first meeting in January, since no committees are going to be meeting, that I understand. So with that, that's the end of my report. City Clerk?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor, no other report to me.
All right. City Treasurer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Treasurer's report for the month ending November thirtieth. General fund began November with five million, four hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars. Revenues came in of one million, six hundred and forty-five thousand, ninety-five dollars. Expenses from the general fund were one million, three hundred and three thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars. Other source use, one hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight thirty-two, giving an ending cash balance in the general fund of five million, five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. Total of all city funds began November with twenty-five million, six hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. Revenues were two million, eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Expenses for the month were two million, eight hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Other source use, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars, giving an ending cash balance in all city funds of twenty-five million, five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Need a motion to approve treasurer's report?
Second.
Moved by Alderman Clifford. Seconded by Alderman Violet. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. City Attorney?
No report.
Communications, anyone have?
Mr. Mayor? I got one thing.
Yeah, sure.
I missed last month's meeting, or last week's meeting, the prior one. But I know that, I just wanted to say thank you, and I think a lot of the people that went over to the, where the veranda is out here for the Christmas decorations. The Ashnala Homeowners Association donated the coffee, the cookies, the hot chocolate, which was needed that night. And I promised one of the ladies that the thing that I would bring that up, and I missed last week, so I'm making good, and I promise.
Very good. Okay, anybody else? All right. Citizens wishing to address the council? Yeah, Linda.
Good evening, Linda Schiappo, one, three, four, four, two, Edinburgh Drive, Payless Heights, of course. Merry Christmas to everybody, first of all. Hope you all have a great one. I'm here tonight just because I'm concerned. I know that we're voting on a city budget tonight, a proposed city budget tonight, and I have some concerns about the amount of money that we're spending as a city. I know, for me personally, twenty-three years ago, was it twenty-three years ago, Bob, when we elected you mayor? Twenty-three years ago, we were broke. And because of great leadership, fiscal responsibility, a lot of belt tightening, it has brought us to this really great, comfortable spot that we're in now. And I don't think that we should lose sight of that. And I keep hearing about, we're going to hire this consultant, and that consultant, and this consultant. Did we have all those consultants years ago? No, because we couldn't afford it. So just because we have a few bucks now, I don't think we should be, maybe we should reconsider about spending money on so many consultants. And I just want you to take this, what I'm saying tonight, into consideration. Not that it's probably, it's not going to change the vote, I know. But perhaps next year, some of the light items that are budgeted for, maybe we will consider not spending that money. And probably my, my biggest concern right now, I know that currently, and I'm fully supportive of our parks and recreation projects, as you know, I'm on the Recreation Advisory Board. But we're over budget. Why are we over budget on both those projects ready, one which hasn't even started? Because of supply chain shortages and worker shortages. So I don't understand why we're starting yet another new project in this. It's, we're, as a country, in not a good place economically. A lot of people are hurting. There, there is the highest credit card debt ever in the history of our nation, in the history. That, to me, is terrifying. I'm a small business owner, I see the effects, what this economy is doing, and my ability to keep, keep things going in my office. It's, it's really difficult, and I'm certain I'm not the only one feeling the squeeze. Now, we just raised our water and sewer bill, we just raised the sales tax, we just raised one other thing. I forget the third one. But anyway, and it's, you know, a penny here, a penny there, a few cents here, a few cents there, and you say, I would, but as we all know, pennies add up. And so I'm just asking you all to reconsider the amount of money that we're proposing to spend. And not that I'm against remodeling City Hall, I think it is in desperate need of it. It's sad-looking, and tired, and old. But I have an old washing machine, too, and I would really like to replace it, but it's just not the right time to do that. So I'm asking the council to consider what they're spending, when they're spending, and maybe we just put it off for a couple more years. I mean, we've lived with it this long, the building's not falling down. We've done a great job remodeling the chambers here and the outside of the building. We've done a lot of really nice things. I just am very concerned that we're going to find ourselves in a, in a position again where like, for the crisis that we couldn't project, for the crisis that we didn't foresee, for the tank in the economy that is certainly, in my opinion, coming at us, full steam ahead. Maybe this isn't the right year to remodel City Hall, maybe we put it off for another year, another two years. That's all I'm asking you to consider. Thank you for listening tonight.
Thanks, Linda. Any other residents, address the council? Okay. If not, Finance Committee.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, number nine on the agenda, to go along with the comments by Linda. We have a motion to accept, or to adopt, the ordinance adopting the annual budget for the city of Payless Heights for the fiscal year starting January first, 2024, and which, of course, will end on December thirty-first, 2024.
Second. Moved by Alderman McGovern, McGrogan, seconded by Alderman Key. Discussion, rule call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Next item is number ten. This goes along with the current budget for 2023. We have to get it back, we've made some adjustments. Motion to adopt an ordinance revising the annual budget for Payless Heights for the fiscal year beginning January first, 2023, and ending next week, December thirty-first, 2023.
Second. Moved by Alderman McGrogan, seconded by Alderman Key. Discussion, rule call.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
That's the end of my report.
Number eleven.
Wait, oh, wait, on the back page. Motion to adopt a resolution amending the personnel manual regarding paid leave of absence.
Second. Moved by Alderman McGrogan, seconded by Alderman Violet. Discussion, rule call.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
That's the end of my report.
All right, thank you, sir. Public safety, Alderman Bassow?
Oh, yes, Mayor, I have no items on the agenda this month. I would just like to, on the behalf of all the members of the Payless Heights Police Department, wish everyone a Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and a happy, healthy, safe 2024. I'd also like to announce that our December twenty-sixth meeting of the Safety Committee has been canceled. So Merry Christmas to everybody.
Great, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Municipal grounds and property, Alderman Begley, I don't believe has a report.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Planning, zoning, Alderman McGovern?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I got two, two items on the agenda. Number one, I want to make a motion to adopt an ordinance allowing three-foot side yard setback along the northerly property line, and will require ten-foot side yard setback, a seven, that's a seven, seven-foot difference, which variance is limited to the distance of the length in the proposed detached garage located at one twenty-seven eighteen South Sixty-Ninth Court, and contained within the PIN number twenty-four thirty-one one 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 zero one four zero 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 zero.
Moved by Alderman McGovern, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Violet. Discussion, rule call.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Aye, 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 aye.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Okay, and I also like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance and a special use approval to allow a B-one use to operate within an existing structure within a B district, specifically an internal medicine clinic known as Integrative Healthcare Group, and allow the subletting of space for a retail pharmacy known as Payless RX, all within the existing building located at one thirty-four nineteen South Ridge Lane Avenue, formerly the First National Bank, First Midwest Bank, excuse me, and contained within the PIN number two four three two three hundred dash zero three nine zero 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 zero.
Moved by Alderman McGovern.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Violet. Discussion, rule call.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Is that it?
That's all, thank you.
Okay, Recreation, Alderman Key.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve payment to Williams Architect, the amount of fifteen thousand, six eighty-nine and thirty-three cents for schematic design, development, reimbursable in unit billing items for Phase One of the pool project.
Moved by Alderman Key. Seconded by Alderman Violet. Discussion, rule call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Then I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution updating the Articles of Agreement with the Southwest Special Recreation Association, also known as SWRA.
Moved by Alderman Key.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Violet. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to approve hiring J and M Displaced Fireworks in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for the July third, twenty twenty-four Independence Day celebration.
Moved by Alderman Key.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Violet. Discussion, rule call, please.
Alderman McGrogan.
Wait, hold on one second.
Okay.
On that motion, just as a thought, before we vote on it, one of the other Alderman came up with a great idea. He said, since this amount continues to go up, he thought it might not be a bad idea for us to maybe contact people like across the canal, over in Worth, and maybe see if they want to join in, and possibly even increase the dollar amount for fireworks and make it even a bigger show, or just get some like other cooperation, because there's so many people from surrounding suburbs that actually view the show. Maybe they would be interested in joining up with us. It's just a thought, I can't take credit for it, one of the other Alderman brought it up, and I thought it was a good idea.
Well, we could probably, we probably have to sign a contract on this, so we could probably.
Yeah, I'm not saying to hold it up.
Hold this one, but then go ahead and do like a negotiation with.
I'm just saying.
With Worth would be the obvious, you know.
On that, the thought of there, we usually get a multiple-year contracts, but now it's just one due, like you said, due to different things in the economy, that's, they're only letting out one year. I was wondering if, in the future, just, just for discussion, or think about it, is capping this at a certain level? You know, because eventually you could be paying an obscene amount, let's just say, probably never happened, but let's just say forty thousand dollars. Are we willing to pay forty thousand dollars and blow it up in the sky? Or do we want to keep it at a limit? Based on everything else on the budget, just try to keep limits on these things? You know, how much, just for thought and come up later, right?
I think it's been around a number, but we bring it here every year anyway, so we have a chance.
Right.
We should, we could talk to Worth, though, as far as they.
But I mean, when we do approve it, if we know there's a limit that we can't go over, that we, you know, that's all I'm saying.
Okay. Motion on the floor, rule call.
Okay, Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
I'm just going to make a comment about that, about Jack's comment, is that, that's what we do, and that's what, that's why we have committees to discuss this stuff. The staff gets, you know, bids and stuff and brings them to us, so.
But you may, you may want to just investigate.
Yes.
Talking of Worth.
Yeah. Lastly, I'd like to make a motion to approve Vermont Systems, Inc. Payment for the annual contract, the amount of ten thousand, three oh eight and eighty-two cents for use of the RecTrack software system. This is a fee that we pay annually.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Key. Seconded by Alderman Violet. Discussion, rule call.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
I just certainly want to say Merry Christmas and a healthy New Year to all of our residents. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Clifford, Roads and Construction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Number eighteen, a motion to approve final payment to Ares, Inc. For the one hundred and twenty-third Street Culver replacement project in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and two dollars and thirteen cents.
Moved by Alderman Clifford, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Lewandowski. Discussion, rule call.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
And this was that big project on one hundred and twenty-third Street, which was brought in budget and didn't cost the city due to grants and different things, so.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
And last, a motion to approve payment for Morris Engineering, for engineering services of various projects throughout the city in the amount of $10,893.
Moved by Alderman Clifford.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Lewandowski. Discussion. Rule call.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
And last, a motion to approve payment for Morris Engineering, for engineering services of various projects throughout the city in the amount of $10,893.
Moved by Alderman Clifford. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lewandowski. Discussion. Rule call.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.